Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Low Planning Board for June 3, 2024. The first matter on the agenda is the approval of the April 18, 2024 minute. Anybody have any comments, corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Motion's made.
A second.
Second by Caleb. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Minutes are approved. And the next matter would be the minutes for May 6, 2024. Anybody have any comments or corrections on May 6?
Mr. Chairman, once again, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second them.
Motion made and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those matters are approved. Thank you. Okay, we have continued business for our site plan review and special permit at 63 Chambers Street. Lexia Estates LLC has applied to the Low Planning Board seeking to demolish the existing structure at 63 Chambers Street and construct two, three-unit residential buildings on the site. The subject property is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approved from the Low Planning Board per Section 11.4 for development with greater than three residential units and a special permit approval from the Low Planning Board per Article 12.1 for use. This matter was before its back on May 6 and was continued to tonight's meeting. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. Attorney Katherine Flood here on behalf of Lexia Estates. We are here tonight to request a continuance. We received comments from the fire department at 1 o'clock today, and we need additional time to address the comments that they submitted.
Any of the board members have any questions or concerns about the continuance? I know we just received the comments from the fire department this afternoon as well. So obviously, that's... We always look favorable to what the fire department has to say. So usually, they want us to do a sweep path on the property. It appears to be what they communicated today. So obviously, we'd have to see what the sweep path is and how that may affect the site plan as well as the special permit. So I have no objections to the continuance. I don't know what the other board members feel now. Anybody have any comments or concerns about the continuance?
Mr. Chairman, just, I see it was requested to June 17. Is that, I think, to Dylan? Does that work with our schedule?
Yes, that's... There's two spots available on that meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the matter until the Planning Board's June 17 meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion made. Second by Mr. Tenza. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Chair votes aye. Richard, you there? Yeah. Okay. So anybody here for Chambers Street will be continued to the 617 so we can get some further comments and concerns from the fire department about the site. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, we have some tree hearings on the agenda this evening. The first one is a tree hearing for 834 Stevens Street. The Low Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons about the proposed removal of the five total trees. One maple with DBH approximately 15 inches, one maple with DBH approximately 18 inches, one maple tree with a DBH approximately 24 inches, and one maple tree with DBH approximately 15 inches, and one maple with DBH approximately 18 at the above address that are damaging the existing sidewalks. May we hear from the applicant to see her name?
Good evening. I'm Paul St. Seer. I'm the DPW Commissioner. I'm speaking on behalf of our department. Some roadwork on several issues here tonight, and it really has everything to do with being able to properly put in place ADA-compliant sidewalks. There are four in total, the first being Stevens Street. As you can see from the pictures that are attached, there's no way for us to get that sidewalk repaired and in place properly with the trees in place.
Okay, thank you. Anybody here this evening want to speak in regards to the tree removal on 834 Stevens Street? Anybody in favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? Opposition, hearing none? I'll turn it over to the board. Do you understand? When I was up here the other day, it was full of leaves, not like the picture. And you can really see how it was hanging out on Stevens Street.
That's correct.
And even trying to walk on that sidewalk, I mean, this doesn't look too bad in this picture. I mean, without the foliage, but with... I mean, the one limb up here is way out over Stevens Street.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, so this doesn't look as bad as how it exists today. Yeah, I mean, that's my comment when I went and looked at it. So any of the board members have any comments?
So it's... Once the trees are removed, is the plan to have a fully concrete sidewalk? Are there going to be any landscape medians or like, et cetera?
So it really depends on where the edge of the public way is. If they can fit it in, clearly, we look to try and put, whenever possible, we put tree boxes in to be able to add those back in.
I see.
Part of the master forestry plan that we have for the city as well. In any case, we would still be replanting these at a nearby location that's feasible.
I see. And what's the requirement for the sidewalk width there?
So there are new PRA rules that go along with this. So there's a 48-inch clearance on the outside of the tree box.
Okay.
It was 36 up until last year. And so that's... That really has changed some things for us. You'll see that they're trying to incorporate that into some of the street work that they're doing with where they will have a bump out, let's say, that will still allow them to incorporate those things or planting strips and things like that.
Okay, I see. And let's see. So how about... Can you speak a little bit about replanting requirements here, applying to these ones?
Yeah, so... And this is really across the board. So what we're really looking to do is, when we have this kind of situation that we're removing these trees, we're looking to also try to address some of the heat islands that we have that have been identified in the city. So we work pretty closely with sustainability with the areas that have been identified and putting the right tree in the right place. That will work better for us. We have this kind of an issue sadly across the city where trees have been maybe in place for too long, and it's disrupting whether sidewalks or streets in many cases. So it's certainly much more strategic, and we're looking at, here again, it's right tree, right place is the goal.
If I just may, though...
Oh, yes.
To that point, only because it may have been an oversight. Usually, we don't condition any of these, but all of the memos have a paragraph that says, "New trees are expected to be planted," and it says either, you know, around the vicinity or on that street, "the exact number of new trees is pending." This is on one of the other memos. This particular memo doesn't mention anything about new plantings whatsoever, and it's the only memo that doesn't. So I'm glad to hear that.
We're happy to make that a condition.
Because I know it's usually a matter of course it's done, but I would just suggest that we condition it with this particular petition.
We're happy to do that, sure.
Okay.
Are you aware of any location nearby that would be, I would say, ideal for planning, like replanting?
So there are some locations that we're looking at, like as you head down towards Chelmsford Street. It's fairly close at that end of Stevens Street. So we're looking to add some things there. I'm happy to provide the actual locations when we get this settled back to you, if you like.
I think we'll be right with trust with the department.
Yeah, I'm happy to submit that, sure.
Mr. Tenza, this is up in your neighborhood. Any questions?
It is, and I saw those trees, and they're almost... I mean, if you view it from the street, they're almost diagonal and almost out to the street. So I understand what you guys are doing. Going forward, my inclination is... I know this was submitted in March, so a couple of months ago, but going forward, I know what I would like to see is I would like to see what, following up with Caleb said, was is I would like to see a plan, an actual plan, where we can say, okay, there's five trees coming out, so many diameter... Trees, and we're supposed to replicate them, and I can't remember the statute. It goes way back. It goes back about 20 years. But we're supposed to replicate so many, depending on the size of the tree.
The diameter, right.
Yeah. So what I would want to see going forward would be an actual plan so we can know that it was done and we can hold the city's feet to the fire.
Sure. We're happy to do that. That's not a problem.
Thank you. Mr. Lockhart, are you with us on Zoom? He's on there, right? Yeah, maybe he doesn't hear us.
Is it muted?
Is it muted? No?
Hold on.
Oh, there we go. Hi, Richard. How are you?
All right. I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty clear.
Mr. Chairman, just to... Mr. St. Seer, and I appreciate Mr. Tenza's request. I just know from sitting here for 18 years, most of the time when they come before... When you come before us, the exact planting's not known, and it really is part of the process. I guess it would almost be... I don't know. I think that might be a tough... I know you said yes, we would do that, but I... From a practical sense, I don't know if that's something that's possible.
Yeah, certainly, we'd look to incorporate them right within that area.
Right.
I mean, I think in this case, it's clear we could say that it wouldn't be eligible just because of the space we have with the public way. I think with this master forestry plan that we have and the idea that we're looking at being able to attend to these heat islands, I think we have a lot of opportunities and places to put them. So I think maybe we could list them as, you know, obviously, if we can get them very close to that location, we will. If not, the alternate will be... Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think they could give us an exact location, but yeah.
Look, we could spread them out all across the city, and we wouldn't know. That's my concern. I think what Mr. St. Seer is saying is they have a plan. If you have a plan, then we can be given guidelines. We're going to try to put 10 trees in this area, and these are what we expect to be locations. If they have that plan, I think it only makes sense to make sure that we... I don't have the experience. I don't have the 18 years.
Well, no, I agree with what you're saying. If it's just... Again, I don't think they can give us the exact location, but if they can give us... Because they've always... That's the program.
Right.
Is to replicate them within a particular geographic area of where they were removed. But yeah, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're clear on what the act is.
Yeah. No, no, no. But going forward, I would want to see the plan. I would want to see if something's going to come before me, before, as far as I'm concerned, I want to see a plan of, this is where we intend to try to place these trees. You know, can we guarantee when you're putting the tree in? No, you can't.
Right.
So I would look for some sort of plan going forward. It's too late at this point, but I would look for something. And I'm just one of five.
So just a... I just want to, for clarification, for Orchard Street, it said, "New trees are expected to be planted on Orchard Street. The exact number of new trees is pending field survey for utility conflicts." So, I mean, I'm just curious.
Yeah, okay. And this was submitted in February of '24, so it's been three months, and I'm looking at it like, okay, so how do we determine? Do we wait six months? Do we wait a year? My question is, is if they have a plan, then, okay, let's use that plan, that forestry plan, and then let's target an area. And I think that can be done within a few months, I would think. That's reasonable.
Okay. Now, it's... If Mr. St. Seer says he can do it, then that's what we'll expect, I guess.
I guess what I would be hoping for is some leniency if we find that we get out there.
Well, that's typically why it's done the way it is.
Right.
Well, absolutely. There needs to be some adjustment, but I think if you give us a target, then we can use those targets to figure it out.
Sure.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah. Sure. Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion that we approve the five tree removals on Stevens Street with the condition that DPW follows up and gives us a letter letting us know where they're going to be relocating the city, whether it be Transfer Street or somewhere nearby. Is that satisfactory, sir?
Perfect, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and second. All in favor say aye.
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 Richard? Okay. So those who approved, five in favor, none against. So the next one we have is...
Orchard.
Is... Jerry was talking about with Orchard Street. The Low Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons about the proposed removal of two total trees. One maple with DBH approximately 12 inches and one maple with DBH approximately 18 inches at Orchard Street that are damaging the existing sidewalks. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Much like this first version, as we're looking to make those improvements to the sidewalks in that area, these trees are causing an issue with the construction for us to be able to meet the guidelines for ADA, and that's what's causing the reason for the tree coming down.
Thank you. Anybody here wants to speak in favor of the tree hearing? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition to the tree hearing on 22 Orchard Street? Opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? That matter, the public hearing is closed. We'll turn the matter over to the public. So I did notice that there are a lot of work going on up there right now. Looks like on the right, just ready to get all those sidewalks in.
Yep.
So are you going to be putting new sidewalks in across the street as well, or is it...
Yes, I believe so, on both sides there.
Okay.
Yep.
Because I can tell that everything is all dug up, and everything's there with the vertical grant... Excuse me. The vertical grant occurring, and yeah, everything looks like was ready to go. And I see on your... So you have... So you plan on putting new trees in pending the survey for utility conflicts? So they're going to be repanted right back on the same street?
Correct.
So that's helpful to know. Any board members have any questions or comments on Orchard Street?
No, Mr. Chairman.
No? Caleb, no? No? Richard, any?
All joking aside, though, but I mean, does that suffice? I mean, kind of... I mean, usually, the memos have that in there. It just happened that the one on Stevens didn't have.
It certainly... No, no, no. I'm not troubled by what they have to say here. What I'm troubled with is I can't find the trees that they're going to put up. Like, where are they going? That's what I'm looking for, and I think in the future, that's what you guys are going to be doing. And that's my hope the next time you're here, so I can at least know where they're going.
Mr. Lockhart, any comments?
No, I'm in favor of the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the tree hearing request on 22 Orchard Street.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's made and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Five in favor, none against. Okay. So moving along, the next one is 56 Gardner Ave. The Low Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons about the proposed removal of one locust tree, DBH, excuse me, approximately 12 inches at 56 Gardner Ave that is damaging the existing sidewalk. Let's see. Can we hear from the applicant on this one, Gardner Street, please?
So not to make this sound like Groundhog Day, but we're basically the same thing here. In this case, you'll note that I don't believe that the trees could make it back in that particular area, but in light of the other roadway work that we have, we're looking for other places on other roadways to replant those trees or this tree.
Okay. Anybody here this evening want to speak in favor of the tree hearing on Gardner Ave? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Any opposition? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none? What's the... The board members have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr.
Just briefly. Where is this tree located in relation to 56 Gardner? I went out there. I didn't find any posted trees, and it looks like it's a condo complex, you know, a wide condo complex, and I couldn't find it in relation to the front of the condo complex.
Right. I thought actually it was to the side. There's that retaining wall. Did you find the retaining?
Okay, all right. Okay.
Well, actually, that's across the street, actually. I took pictures of it.
Okay.
And it matches it without the greenery, but it's across the street, actually.
All right. I was looking for it.
Oh, I know. Yeah, it's not at... It's not at 56...
It's across the street from 56?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I had the same thing. I was wandering around aimlessly, looking at trees.
I mean, I noticed the tree with the basketball.
Yeah, yeah, well, they were playing basketball when I was out there. The guy was playing basketball.
Well, and I do appreciate that the fact that you're posting. Posting is incredible help to the neighborhood and us.
I have to say, usually, there's not this much lag time from when the pictures come in to when we see it. So it was kind of, you know, obviously, they had no foliage on them, and then, you know, looking at it today was...
Looks a bit different.
Yeah, completely different experience when you went out there.
Any comments from the board members? Richard, any comments? Mr. Lockhart?
I have none, no.
Yeah, this one's not as big as the other trees, but it's right there on the sidewalk. Yeah. Yep. Yeah, I could tell at the back end and then down the street a little bit.
To your point, Caleb, I thought they were taking like the stump of that huge tree with the basketball. That probably could come down, too, but I know there's some public college students wouldn't be too happy about that.
Okay, so this one is going to... It's only one tree. Right, yeah. And...
It's a small caliber tree.
Yeah, very small, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none? That motion carries. Five in favor, none against. So our last tree hearing of the night is Bachelor Street. The Low Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons about the proposed removal of three total trees. One locust tree with DBH approximately 30 inches, and one oak tree with DBH approximately 12 inches, and one oak tree with DBH approximately 18 inches at the above address for construction of an ADA-compliant sidewalk. I get it from the applicant?
So here again, much the same. This would be a brand-new installation of a sidewalk. The street would certainly benefit with the road construction happening to be able to take this opportunity and make it compliant with ADA.
Anybody here like to speak in favor of the tree hearing on Bachelor Street? In favor? In favor? Favor? Hearing none? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? I'll turn the matter over to the board members. Board members have any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just comment that I was happy to hear that you're putting an ADA-compliant sidewalk, because just going back to a project that we approved, it was fairly dense housing on the old site on Broadway where the food bank was located. And they actually were using the public parking that's just around the corner from here, and it's not that bad of a walk. I walked it, but obviously, having a nice sidewalk over here is going to help that final leg, that connection to that parking. And by the way, although it hasn't been built yet, but at this point, Sunday morning, there wasn't even anybody in that parking lot. And I've looked at it several times, so there's capacity there. So it's nice. We're going to have a nice ADA-compliant sidewalk. Certainly, it's going to help the access to that lot as well. That's all I can say, Mr. Chairman.
Any other board members have any questions, comments? Dan, any questions? Good? Caleb?
I'm good, too.
Good? Richard?
I have none.
Done? I guess I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? That motion carries. Five in favor. Lexa.
Perfect. Thanks so much.
Wish you well.
Appreciate it. You bet.
Moving along on the agenda, we have a site plan for 17 Connie Square. Sun Building LLC has applied to the Low Planning Board to construct an additional unit at the building located at 17 Connie Square. The property is located in the downtown mixed-use DMU zoning district in the multifamily mid-rise MFOM overlay district. The project requires site plan review, approval to Section 11.4.2.2 for an expansion of a structure with more than three dwelling units. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, board members. This is Trudy Hale. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I actually am here to ask you for an adjournment. I apologize for being on Zoom, but I was told that I didn't need to be here this evening because I had submitted my request in writing last week. We submitted our application and quite frankly, thought we were actually exempt from site planning review under 1143, but... Pardon me?
I don't know. Someone said something. I don't know what it was. I don't know what came from it.
Sorry. Okay, sorry. So anyway, after having spoken to the board, realizing we needed to get site planning review and we needed to get some additional elevations, we spoke with the architect, and we do need additional time to get those to you.
Yeah. Yeah, because I believe... The only thing that we saw in that site plan that was submitted was just a floor plan. So obviously, we'd need more than that for site plan.
Correct.
We'd need existing plan, you know, what's going to be in there, what the outside looks like, and we just looked at a floor plan.
Right. Well, and again, my apologies, but we earned the impression because it needed historic board review. It's completely within the footprint of the building that we did not need the site plan review. So we did scramble to get it together, but we did not achieve the goal of getting you the elevations that you need.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure. And we have Mr. Lockhart here, who's our representative on historic board.
Mr. Chairman, before we go any further, I need to recuse myself on this petition.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So Mr. Tenza will not be voting on this matter? So, Richard, anything you want to say? I know you're on our historic board as our representative from the planning board.
Right. I'm just curious. Right, I, I'm just curious, is the, have you got a date to, to meet with the historic board?
I believe my client has worked that out. Um, I don't know the date particularly.
The date, okay.
All right, but you're moving along on.
But he, yes, he's aware.
All right, good. That's all I, I'm just, you know...
So, how far, you're looking for continuance, ma'am?
To June 17th, if that's possible.
Okay. All right. So, obviously, now that, you know, it's gonna fall into the site plan, we're gonna need a better set of plans, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, those, if I could just interject a little...
Sure, Mr. Lockhart.
Those elevations that you're working on would be very important for the historic board to see as well.
Understood. Understood.
Okay.
Thank you. So, um, any of the board members have any comments on the continuance? I have no problem with the continuance, obviously, to get a set of plans.
I, 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 I do, um, um, wonder whether we could do a tour inside, or, you know, I know it's, it's kind of a, a property, it's not like some others, more open property that, that you can kind of look in and, and understand the building, so I'm wondering whether we can arrange a...
A little site visit?
Site visit, yes.
You're welcome to walk by it, it's currently a tunnel. We're gonna be putting, uh, walls on the other side to create a unit, so there's really nothing to see but the tunnel.
I see.
But you're certainly welcome to do that, and I can arrange, if you want to have a, a bigger or a more in-depth look, I can certainly arrange for that.
I mean, so the tunnel is basically where the sign was posted, that's what the old Lowell Sun buses would go through.
Right.
It's gonna be closed off, and, yeah.
Not completely closed off, not to the ground.
I'm sorry?
It won't be completely closed off, we're just creating a floor beneath the existing floor that's on the, uh, third and fourth floor of that building.
Okay. So, when the new plans that we get are gonna show us, the exterior of the building as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. I can wait for the plan first.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, because, I mean, we, we've already mentored the site, um, and like you said, the only thing we really see is the sign hanging on the fence.
Right.
And, you're like, no. You're like, usually, as Caleb was saying, usually we get to see a little bit more instead of, and then also we saw with the floor plan, so... Okay. But I have no objection to the continuance to June 17th. I'll make a motion that we continue the, well, first of all, let me see if anybody in the audience wants to speak on this matter. Um, I'm sorry about that. Anybody here wants, and wanna speak in regards to the 7 Conny Square application? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? Uh, I'll make a motion that we continue the matter to June 17th, '24.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
So, any opposition? No, so we have four in favor, none against, and one abstain. Good luck, thank you, ma'am, we'll, we'll see you in a month, I'm, well, two weeks, I should say. Yeah.
So much, have a great evening.
Yeah, you too. Okay, so, um, any comments from the, any other board members?
Mr. Chairman, um, if I may, uh, tomorrow afternoon, 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the Lowell, bless you, at the Lowell Senior Center is, it's an important meeting. I'm on, I'm on a, I'm on the committee for what's called the At Home in Greater Lowell Regional Housing Strategy Plan, and it's the, uh, it's being initiated by NEMCOG, and the whole idea is trying to, um, have the NEMCOG region come up with a strategic regional housing plan. Because at the end of the day, we seem to be the solution for all the outline communities, and so, and I've made it very clear to, um, the administration of NEMCOG, I'm active member of, of, of the committee, and as being executive officer of NEMCOG, is that, um, this plan will be a failure to me if it doesn't really truly come up with a housing plan for the region. And, um, if, if anybody wants to come, it's a public hearing. The concern is, we, we had a great kickoff meeting, we really did, uh, it was at Mill Number 5. Uh, we had representatives from the, the surrounding communities, it was well-attended, and, uh, but even there were, you know, anecdotal stories, or stories of what some of the other communities did, creating some affordable housing with the Housing Authority, and they were touting it as something fantastic, and then they go, 62 and older or 55 and older, they really don't wanna have families there that, you know, that, that need affordable housing. Uh, and that seems to be the, the common theme when a, when a town talks about creating affordable housing, it usually is age-restricted, right? So, um, but I, so anybody is, is welcome to attend. It says, "Over 50 stakeholders in the region completed a survey in April that helped NEMCOG staff develop a set of five major goals for At Home in Greater Lowell. Staff are now collaborating with the University of Massachusetts Donahue Institute to answer research questions posed in the survey and develop numerical targets related to each goal. The results of this research will be shared at the Strategies Summit on June 4th, which is tomorrow night, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, at the Lowell Senior Center, 276 Broadway in Lowell. The participants will then break into groups to collaboratively, um, develop strategies that will cons, that will be considered in the planning process." And one of the things I've been pushing for, too, is, is the meetings have been in Lowell, and it's like, if, this can't be a Lowell-centric plan, all right? So, um, and, um, I'm, I'm actively engaged in this, but at the end of the day, if I don't truly feel it's a regional housing plan, I'll come out speaking against it. It's gotta be a regional housing plan. And, so anyways, it's, it's important if you've, you got a couple hours, 4:00 to 6:00 tomorrow, if you wanna swing by, but it's important to have the towns participate, um, in, in, in having town managers and assistant managers in planning departments. So, again, it was well-attended, the first meeting, I think it was about 70 people, uh, and, and there were a lot of administrative people from the towns, because they're the ones that are gonna have to work with it. But the difficulty is, honestly, any kind of zoning change to really promote, uh, development in the towns require town meeting votes. And that's becoming very difficult, even with the not requiring a supermajority. Still, to come up with a majority at town meeting versus a majority of the people sitting here, and that's why I didn't think that should have been a cop-lance change for municipalities like Lowell, where you're not, you don't need 300 people to come and vote, you just have the elected officials here, and you change it from a supermajority or simple for zoning change. I, I was troubled by that, but they got changed, and so be it. But the towns still, it's very difficult to get zoning changed, so, as they're realizing with the MBTA zoning, there's, there are a lot of communities have, have passed, have passed it, but there's still a lot that are resisting it at this point, or they're taking a wait-and-see attitude, and, you know, see what happens, so. Anyways, it's, it's, it's an important project, um, I honestly think if, if NEMCOG can't engage the region and come up with a good plan, then maybe just, regionalization is just not working on a lot of levels. And then on some levels, it's, there are some synergies that could be had, but, um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of barriers to break, break down at many levels, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Any other board members have any update?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Richard.
Uh, for the historic board, we're just coming off a very successful weekend of doors open Lowell. We got many, um, positive comments that were received back, and all in all, it was a, a great day. And we look forward to expanding it a little bit next year. Our next meeting is a week from tonight, Monday, June 10th, in the mayor's reception. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Tony Tenza?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, too, Member Frichette. On your, on your topic, as far as NEMCOG, is it going to require zoning changes in those communities? Or, 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 um, or there are other avenues, I guess?
There are other avenues, and sometimes it's a mindset change, you know, in, in the community. So, in some communities, uh, within their current zoning, they really could approve more housing, it's just, there's so much resistance. But in, in several of the communities within the NEMCOG region, they still have acre minimum lot sizes. Um, you know, that's just, in and of itself, makes it very difficult. And, and a lot of the communities now, uh, sewerage is not necessarily the issue anymore with septic systems and wells, they've got, you know, so, um, they've got access to municipal water and sewerage as well. So, um, you know, there is, there, I think it's, um, there's a multi-pronged approach that we could at least move in a better direction that we're in right now. And, and when you, the towns, I mean, you're trying to get them to understand, it doesn't even necessarily have to be affordable housing, but housing that's affordable, right? So, e- even, most, a lot of the towns don't have a lot of apartments. They don't have, they just don't, you know, and, and we're beating ourselves, we're eating our young here in Lowell, trying to turn every single family into an apartment, but you got the towns that just, they're not, just not creating that at all. So, I mean, that's, I think that's something that, um, and I know there's some good people from the towns that serve on NEMCOG that they're a little frustrated because they'd love to see a little bit better balance in their communities, but, you know, the people that vote them in, um, are the, you know, uh, they feel very strongly about.
Well, and, and it truly is a balance. I mean, that's the problem, we've lost balance in Lowell.
Right, exactly.
I mean, we've just, you know, we just keep building, um, and, and we think we can build our way out of it.
Right.
Which is nonsensical. I mean, realistically, we need to, we need jobs for these, these people. You know, there's far too many poor people in Lowell. They need jobs. So, I appreciate your efforts on that. Um, one other thing that I thought about, uh, over the weekend, um, was, um, Mr. Lockhart is on the historic board, and one of the things I didn't see a lot of was, um, in the Lowell Forward Plan, I probably shouldn't talk about the Lowell Forward Plan, but we don't seem to grasp onto the fact that this is a, a historic place, and there is so much we could do with the historical assets that we have with the, the, the people that, you know, occupied this area. There is so much we could tie into with, with history, you know, the Lowell National Historic Park, all of that, and, um, um, what I got out of the Lowell Forward Plan was, is, is housing. And, um, I, I think it's important that we start focusing on what is our major assets. Our major assets in this city are our rivers, the Concord and the Meramec, and also our, our history. We were the Industrial Revolution, we were it, we were in the center of it. And we don't seem to want to, you know, bring people in. Um, tourism, you know, um, tourism is kind of like an after, um, afterthought sometimes, and I think those are great assets, and Mr. Lockhart, with his reports, made me think about, you know, some of the history that we have and, and the buildings and, and whatnot, so, um, just a thought, um, figured I would share.
Yeah, I, I could add a little bit to that, yeah, but, um, there's a lot of, you're right about the history, but there's more to take advantage of. There's a lot of history just in the buildings and so, you know, prior architects, and what were those buildings used for 75, 100 years ago? The administrator, Steve Stoll, is, is taking really upon himself to lead the way in terms of plaques that go up on downtown buildings that indicate, uh, you know, some of the history of, uh, what that building is. You could easily create a walkway. People could walk around and just note where these buildings are and learn a lot more about what had, what went on internally. There's, there's a lot to that. And I don't think it gets enough publicly, if you will, that they're there, but they're, they're all throughout the downtown Lowell Historic District. In addition to those, there is a similar program, program for, excuse me, private residences. You can apply and have one up in the front of your house, um, a plaque indicating that the house is of historic significance. So, just to wrap my comment up, I, you know, the, 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 those two things, but there's much more in terms of, um, history if we, if we really dig into it and publicize it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Any other board members have any further comments? None? I'll make a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Oh, oh, second.
Second? That's okay. Motion's made in second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Nope. Motion carries. We are adjourned, good night, and thank you very much, everybody. Good night, everyone. Good night. Thank you. Thank you.